...of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Excuse the agenda, I have a motion that we approve the agenda. We have a motion, we have support, in discussion. If you ever say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. At this time, we're going to have a time for our public comment, this is a special business meeting, so this is a time to voice your opinion. We both have one at the end today, because we just got to go through the three items here. Any comments? Go ahead.
Yeah, you're right up in the paper to Elizabeth, said you're trying to compare their wages to HVAC and electrician on the poverty raise, well, my husband's HVAC and his company across the board gave an eighty dollar a month raise this year. That's way less than what you want to give them, or anybody, and any company I've ever worked for, when they give a raise, they would give a raise across the board. You have thirteen people between elected and appointed officials. Therefore, if you're giving a raise to one, you should be giving a raise to thirteen, not signifying two out, one that's been here for four months for a raise, the other one got a significant raise two years ago, along with your position, her position, and the treasurer's position. It's a little ridiculous what you're trying to put through for these guys to have for a raise, and signifying two instead of thirteen.
Yes, Dan?
I wrote it down, because I'll forget. Why did you both run for this office, to help the residents of this township, or to earn a living? You both knew what the job would entail when you ran both times, and you, Megan, when you ran last fall. If the salary wasn't satisfied, you should have not ran for those positions. There are people out there who do more every day for their jobs and make a lot less pay. The township did not set your hours in the office, you set them. You have deputies to assist you, they don't have raises coming every year, and certainly not a twenty-five percent raise. And yes, Andy, your responsibilities for voting have increased the last few years, but when the vote for the nine days was proposed, you stated that you would quit if it passed, and here you are, knowing what the job entails, and wanting more money. And I realize that you, Megan, are trying to fix some things in the treasury area, but once they are fixed, and things settle down, what would the need be for a raise then? We're a small township and are not rich people living here, the next thing we know our taxes will be raised to cover those raises. I would hope that you had run for office to help out the township, and that would entail a bit of volunteer time from now on then. And just because Dan has recommended a raise doesn't mean you have to accept it. And don't forget, you take on your responsibilities, and you don't have to. The pay that the other townships give for the job has nothing to do with Maple Valley Township. Why do we need to keep up with everyone else in the world? You need to spend the money frugally and get equal or better value in exchange, and so far, I don't see a lot of that happening.
Thank you, another one? Go ahead.
Okay, you said that you were requesting a twenty-eight percent raise. Well, I went and figured it out, right now, she makes a total of twenty-eight-five. That's seven thousand nine hundred, seven thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars more. That's thirty-six thousand four hundred and eighty dollars a year. For someone that's only here six hours a week.
Rebecca Camino, if you could.
The total, on the, right here on the bill, or the budget, for her total is twenty-eight-five for the clerk, right there, twenty-eight-five. And you times that by twenty-eight percent, it comes up to seven thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars.
You mean eighteen-five.
Huh? Eighteen? Twenty-eight percent times twenty-eight thousand five hundred comes up to seven thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. You don't know how to do a percentage? And that makes it thirty-six thousand dollars, four hundred and eighty dollars a year.
I feel as though, I agree with this lady over here, I mentioned it at the last meeting. Each of one of you folks who are elected to the position, and you accept this position, you knew what your salary was going to be. You accepted that salary at that time. There's no way this community should be able to be giving you folks any more money, period. If that's what you accepted at the time of your election.
I really wasn't done with my two minutes.
Go ahead.
And for Megan, only been here four months, to ask for twenty-one percent?
She didn't ask.
Well, I don't care who did what, that's outrageous. Twenty-one percent, and like Penny said, why not, and you didn't ask for one at all. Why not give a little bit to everybody? I mean, I don't understand why you'd have to just pick out two.
Thank you. More? Okay, public comment is closed. Start with the planning commission appointments, I have two excellent people that we're going to put in here. One will be Bill Canelosi, he was just finishing out Megan's thing, I'm going to pre-do him for three years.
It's two.
And then, I am going to put in Bruce Doer for Gordon's spot, starting in March. Bruce Doer, he lives in the Draski Mansion, outside by County Lake over there, fine gentleman, he's also the pastor of the Cowboy Church. Very, very fine gentleman. He's an electrician, has a good heart, good caring person. Motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the appointments of Bill Canelosi and Bruce Doer, who needs the planning commission, starting March first, 2025.
Or, any more discussion? So I've talked to these guys, I've known Bill for thirty years, he's a good, solid guy. Bruce Doer, I spent about, probably three hours on the phone with him a couple weeks ago, just really aligned with what I believe we want in our community, very, quite libertarian, along with a heart for people. Five years he lived there? He owns his own business. Any more comments? If you ever say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. I think they're going to be reelected on that position. Salary resolutions. I heard there's been quite a discussion on these, salary resolutions. So I'll start by, by what I'm thinking. I've worked as a hourly worker all my life. I worked for a company once, I've worked for several good managers, I've worked for some bad ones. Worked for a manager that offered me incentives, and I had to reach those goals and have him take, not pay up. I set up his entire CNC department, made him look good to his bosses, never got anything out of it. I felt he was a very unfair person. I think that everybody here has probably worked in an hourly job, and they thought their bad boss was horribly unfair to them. I didn't do anything on this for percentage-wise. Tried to look at what people were making in the area, what people are making in the United States, and tried to give a wage that was fair. There's nothing here that has anything to do with the raise, it has to do with the value of the position in my mind. And after I had worked for those gentlemen, I said that if I would ever do anything fair in my life, that would be, if I ever had the opportunity, I would do something good and fair. So this is all completely my doing. I'm sure people have been critical of their bosses before. Looked at their bosses, said I would never do that. There are people doing the exact same thing now. They are their boss that they hate. That's how I feel about that. These are fair wages, these are not high wages, these are not good wages, these are fair wages. If you take twenty-five thousand dollars a year, if they work twenty-five hours, if Andy works twenty-five hours a week, that's nineteen dollars and twenty-five cents an hour. It's a fair wage. Your husband works as a snicker like that, your husband probably makes double that.
You don't know what my husband makes.
I know he's a journeyman, he's a.
My husband's not a journeyman.
I think nineteen to twenty dollars is a fair wage, and that's why I put that down.
So will the office be open twenty-five hours a week?
This is not for you.
Will the office be open twenty-five hours a week?
No, this is for them to do their job. Their job is not to service the public. She's a clerk, she takes care of the records, she takes care of all that stuff for the township. She's not, she's not a public relations administrator. It's not the job, not even close. The treasurer's job takes a few less hours, I still figured it out, about nineteen dollars an hour. And I think that's fair wages. You slicker, what do you charge for the time and materials?
Me?
Yes.
I don't do anything for myself. I don't make that much money where I work at.
How about you in construction?
Nope, you're mistaken, I'm here, in a few years.
So that's what I figured it was about, an average wage.
You didn't think to ask the taxpayers about that?
Uh, no, because that's the supervisor's job.
Give away our money?
Supervisor's job to do the research, super supervisor's job to put forward the salary resolutions, so that's what I did. I don't, uh, I don't see why I would ask the taxpayers. We have a budget, we have a three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar income. There's no reason we can't afford this.
That's actually the problem.
What's that?
Our income is poor.
Our income is poor?
Yes. To our township. You know, our state shared revenue's like two hundred and sixty thousand. We manage a couple thousand souls in this entire township. Our income is extremely low. Now, you're supposed to manage a town with three hundred and fifty-two thousand and ten dollars, actually, is all I see that you had. That's off the old budget meeting, I printed it, you have to look it up. And, uh, I actually did some labor along with it, it's my job, helped me along. I think that township-wise, I mean, look around. We're actually highly paid compared to. Where am I getting my information from?
By Google.
I just ask.
Yes.
You ask, and you get answers from people, it's nothing to hide, right? The only township that pays close to what we pay is Wayfield, and maybe, maybe Cape, but they're managing twice as much. They have four thousand souls in their township, and their state shared revenue's going to be way higher. Actually, Kato's is a public exec same as Wayfield's, for their state share money pay. If it's based on population, how is that even possible, since they have twice the people, and three times the size of the township? Ask the state, I'm not sure. I think that number's fictitious, because if it's based on population, and their population's twice ours, then it ain't based on population, and the state shared revenue would be based on something else. Because I know I would spend their state share revenue, and we're all very similar as far as that. I mean, if you want to talk about nineteen-hundred-and-sixty-person townships, then we are above par. We're already paying four thousand dollars over what everybody does. Who are those people, charity, I? These are the people around us, do we want to compare ourselves to other people, absolutely not. But I want to make a point, you talk about a boss, I'm a boss, I'm a boss in lots of places, and our guys are well-cared-for, but the money's different, you know what I mean? In other words, I wouldn't expect a farmhand to make what a tool and die maker makes. It's not the same job, it's not the same money, it's not the same income. Decisions I'm paying in my world are based on the income that you're generating, and what is our income, and where does it come from? Our income basically only comes from the taxpayers. We have a little bit of income coming from that building, that asset, we got a little bit of income coming from this building, and I say little, I'm not very much, little. It's not enough to do anything with it, we're not generating revenues in this town. Populations increase by increasing business and livelihood of areas. Our focus should be totally there, and I brought it up at the last meeting, we're well. I'm like, you know, support your businesses the best that you can, help them, help them be better businesses, why do you do that, you know? Little, simple things, like sidewalks, better lighting, you're trying to do this, you know? That's a good supportive thing. At the time, we had other projects going on, bring it back up, you know, let's get the main streets of both towns, not one town, looking at hecking a lot better. Light them up, do nice things with it, that's taxpayer dollar usage. If you go so far above and beyond what the power is for the places that surround us, well, I guarantee you what's going to happen, I'm not, I'm a fairly well-tactician, if we go above and beyond, that wage is going to set until the budget meeting happens. Everybody's going to show up, and they're going to slap it down. And, uh, because it's, to them, it's out of hand, you would not believe the amount of phone calls and texts and things that they got it for that resolution without. I mean, the conversations that I've had with my community, I think that I understand full well what they think, okay? And, and we're having dialogue now about this. That is also my job, is to go, to hear what the people have to say, convey that, or the best that I can without being disrespectful or insulting in any way. But, I think that with our income that we have as a township, you can't have wages that add up to over forty percent, you won't survive as a business. Hold on, yours, hers, hers, his, mine, all the planning commission, all of our subsidiary people, your deputies, by the time you add all those up, it's over forty percent. That scale is tipped on the wrong side of the house. And that's what I'm saying, a business can't operate when they're paying off forty percent wage alone, because you have material, and all that other stuff that's involved in that. We don't generate a business that makes anything here. All we do is collect and redistribute, okay? And honestly, you know, there's a lot of shade getting thrown at the board, but we have spent quite a lot of time and money fixing our assets up, but our assets are only part of the town. Now, let's go after the towns, man, you know, let's put our money there. You know what, I'll do this job for free, you ain't got to pay me, and everybody knows that's the truth too. I'm sitting here for the people of Maple Valley Township, it's not a job for me, I have enough jobs. Truthfully, I would set this one down, walk away, and do a gladly, but it's like, I want to help my community get better. It ain't about the money, and it can't be about the money, because my point is, when you're working as a farmhand, you can't expect to make HVAC wages, or electrician wages. Those guys make their money because they're in a field that's making tons of loot, and they can share that wealth, you don't have it. You don't have it, your balanced budget is setting at three-five-two-oh-one-oh number. You're actually adding a deficit to that. Let's take our federal government, our central government, look at the deficit they run out of. They take our tax dollars and they spend them like a bunch of crazy kids. And we're just seeing the beginning of that, and we can't be part of that, man. That's where I'm at, you know? Do I think that these ladies are worth their, their saying? Sure. You trained yourself, you're doing a good job, that's not the point. You don't work in an environment that has that kind of money. And that's my beef with the resolution, and when I, it was eye-opening to me when I actually looked at it, and I'm like, I mean, I can't support it, there's no way I can support it, knowing what the constituents of this town think about that. But, I need to put reason behind that, I just can't tell you no, without telling you why first, you know? As a businessman, there's no way I would pay my employees that much, if that's all I have. You'd never be able to run your business. Now, you know, the last meeting, we just took a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, threw it at the roads, out of our saved-up money, that's not revenue, that's money that the township boards before us had saved in the purse. They had cash when we came in, and lots of it, we started using it along with ARPA money to fix up the town. Yep, and so you take that money and throw it at the roads, that's a good call, but that only buys you X number of years, well, you got to fix it up again. You better make sure you got the money when that time comes, because we were deficient on the roads by a hundred and fifty thousand, and I led the motion to spend that money. What are you going to do when it ain't there? It's, uh, it's going to be a problem, you know, I'm always on the little bit of the conservative side, but I've learned my, from failure. Failure has been a great educator for me in my life. And decisions, even though they seem fair, I appreciate the story, I've worked for a lot of guys that didn't pay me none of this work, okay? But then, I just hurdled back and kept going. You know, eventually, it wasn't about what they had to say, you know? You have to understand the arena that we're in, and, and I feel like, given the arena that we're in, and if you take the comparables with all the townships that surround us, we're at the top tier. We're paying well for the amount of money that we generate through taxation. That's my spiel, that's all I'm going to say, but it's helpful. Thanks, thanks for listening.
I've been getting the calls and, you know, just up there. They all say the same thing, they like the job the girls are doing, they think they're doing a good job, and they got a nasty job to do, but they just didn't like the salaries jumping that high right off the bat. They said, yeah, they probably do more, but they didn't like it going that high, that fast. But they said, yeah, agreed, the girls doing a fantastic job, and they said that too, but they said they didn't like that big jump right off the bat, at one time like that, they didn't think it was.
I think the part that bothered me is that people are tying it to the individuals, and I think that that's something that's a pretty big misconception, because I, I knew what the salary was coming in, I didn't ask for a raise. I mean, and when we're talking about this, when we adopt budget resolutions every year, it's for the township, for the positions, it's not like, I like Tim, so I'm going to pay him three thousand dollars more this year. And I think that's the part that's troubling me about all of this, is because, you know, I absolutely respect your opinion, and I think we're basing it on income generated, percentage, that's the absolute way to go about this, I think, based on our township size, how much our tax revenue is, and how we're sitting with it, right? But it keeps getting tied back to the job I'm doing, or the, or the personal effort I'm putting in, and I don't like that, and I'd like us to divorce that from the conversation.
I apologize for anything that may be.
No, that's okay, I just, that's where I'm sitting at with it, that's why I've been struggling, it's, um, it's also why I've been kind of struggling with the conversations, the things I'm seeing on social media, it's just, it's, it's not about individuals, I think when we're talking about this, it has to be like, what is the actual level of effort required by the rule, okay? What does the market look like, okay? What does our actual budget look like, okay? Is it hard to stomach a twenty-plus percent raise? Absolutely, I, I can totally see that, and I can see why our residents feel that way. And if we, I don't think we're going to adopt that today, but I think what we have to ask ourselves is, are we setting up the positions correctly for the future, for the rate of inflation, for the actual hours required for the specific rules, for statutory duties? And those are the questions we should be asking ourselves, and you know what, if it's behind because previous boards didn't get raises for years, then maybe we make a strategy to catch it up over a period of time, if that makes sense. That's how I like to approach things, but that, that's my personal opinion on all of it.
You said that, I mean, I think it's perfect, you just make a plan going forward for the positions.
Sure.
And what we have, so, with that being said.
Well, I said, how do we rate compared to other townships around? And they said, they have a problem, they didn't like the big jump, but they said, even lesser mountains are kind of bringing equal to positions in other township, they don't have a problem with that, but it's just a great big twenty-some percent jump at one time.
At one time, it's just a huge struggle, and absolutely, because the previous boards never did increase, I mean, you can look back. It was deficient. Absolutely, they. And we raised it up. Precisely. And there was never anything that was done, so, you know, it's totally this hard as well like that one, maybe a large jump. And, but then we step back, and we take a smaller step to get the positions to where they need to be in the future.
Okay, good discussion, well heard. I'll tell you what, what's your present, what's your present salary, it's nineteen, nineteen-five? So you talked about ten percent less one day.
Well, I was completely blindsided by the resolution, okay? I actually brought up first the cost of living increase, I think, I don't know.
Thirty-three percent?
I was.
Less than the cost of eggs.
I was thinking about the width and breadth of this discussion coming at me all at the same time, and I'm like, whoa, you know, this is a lot bigger than, than something I was ready to deal with at that moment. You know? I think that the board needs to do its homework, look around at the people that tax to us within the same county, with similar populations.
There's nobody that's similar to us.
There's lots of the similar to us. There's lots of the similar to us.
No, Sheridan has its own town. There's nothing to do, they don't...
Population wise.
They don't have to do anything in that town. The township here takes care of two towns.
Yeah, but the population is the same. I mean, we're far fields and little towns that barely have a post office. You understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
A town's like a thousand stones in a piece. So if you take a group and pool together, they make up just under two thousand. Pioneer said that like thirteen, fourteen hundred. Sheridan or Sidney is right around our same. Sidney is very comparable. Montomb is pretty comparable in population. These are townships that are just like us.
Okay, what's your suggestion, then?
I'm not sure. I told you, we are already at the level of Cato and Winfield. We're at the pay level. We are sitting even with them actually, which tells me that the board did a great job getting the levels of pay up. I mean, you've already set the bar. The bar's been set for the other townships, like I think the Montoms bear fifteen thousand across the board. I think that Sidney's even less or just at that. You know, and that's what I'm saying. Right now, our salaries, we actually went a little bit above and beyond when we first came on and hit it harder. And I get what you wanna do. It's notable and it's honorable. Your intentions are great, but the circumstances surrounding your intentions aren't that great, and that's beyond your control. Honestly, two hundred and sixty thousand, do you know how much revenue we pulled in in taxes? Like, how much tax do we yank in a year?
We get about two percent, ten percent back.
Ten percent? To collect it, run your elections, and take care of the assets of your state? Are you joking me? The real criminal in this court, go up the line. Change the state share revenue to twenty-five percent, you know? Cut us in on the, and let us do something in our community with something that amounts to more than nothing. Because when you starburst a debt and barely give us enough to fix the towns up, what do you get? You get towns that are not fixed up, you know? And, you know, this board was blessed with ARCA money coming in. Well, you know, that was fun. We used it to fix up our assets. Cool. And we used it on our parks. Now we're on our own dime. So the process is gonna go back to pretty slow. There's gonna be a slow growth again, you know? And yet, like I said, the state share revenue ain't nowhere near enough to do what we need to do with it. And that's the ridiculous part, because I think that the amount of taxes that you collect in this area are more than enough to support our fire department, our schools. Well, what else are we supporting besides those things?
Community college, library, ISB, four-H. All of those things are voted on.
Yeah? But there are smaller amounts of money compared to those pretty big ones, right?
You're right. When I look at my tax bill, they're very equal. And I just cut the disbursement for all of them, so...
How much other do we send north outside of our community? If you're telling me that we get ten percent back, and it's two hundred and sixty thousand, we're sending two eighty-six hundred thousand out. That's how math works in my book.
So I wanna say the tax rate, it's right around three million a year. And just a couple of...
Ten percent?
So, a couple of things I was just looking at. How many voters do you have? We don't talk about population.
One thousand, registered voters, one thousand six hundred and twenty.
So Lakeview has just shy of twenty-two hundred. So Cato has just shy of twenty-two hundred voters. Their treasurer is at twenty-three thousand. I was just doing my math and digging for thinking about the population come back perspective. So I think I would be more in favor of like incremental increase of like three percent. Would be what I would recommend for this for this for it. Using that as a comparison point. Like I know you said Cato is like apples to apples, and I understand that and respect it. It's kind of close. I'm not as familiar with it.
Is it Cato maybe?
Yes.
Close to it.
I meant for the size of the town, but...
Pretty sure Cato was getting all this since like the end of the year too. I think they might have stopped that.
No, I'm just placing the discussion on what I see available to us. And honestly and truly, you know, it is that. I think they're talking about...
Well, you gotta do the resolution. Put mine out there. Any other suggestions? Three percent, two percent?
That's like the... The trailer position, six thousand nine, ninety-five, and the proposed position would be one thousand fifty-five. That's a three percent raise.
Huge question. I guess I ain't got to talk. Does our state share revenue go up any possibility? Does our state share revenue go up every year? Or do they just ignore it?
They ignore it, but then there's also...
Our taxes are going up, and our state revenue has to be...
Yeah, yeah, that is right.
That's what I'm saying. The real criminals are north of us. They're not giving enough back to the townships to run and be necessary. You know, they put us in a difficult position.
We feel like, what's the name of the board?
Oh, the F sixty-five.
F sixty-five. We feel that out every year in order to get our state.
Right.
And it doesn't seem to change when I put it up. No, that's what I'm saying.
And a lot of the folks that are, you know, on this side of the aisle, they're the taxpayers, the people providing the revenue from their backs. You know what I mean? And I've watched my taxes just roll up. I'm personally responsible for a lot of that, but I understand, you know? But at the same time, I'm like, man, get some of it back to the town then.
We can't hear you.
The microphone's running off.
They're not, they don't got a mic.
The furnace running, no.
No way he can hear me.
No, we can hear you. Dan had his hand in front of his mouth.
I can hear it before the freezer kicked off.
And I turned it down. If you remember at the MTA...
Cause they're not on.
The recognition. We turned them on before the meeting.
Well, then that's not turned on. There you go.
Hi.
At the MTA, they have mentioned the revenue place. They're working on putting together a costume, we used to have costumes for sharing trust. But in two thousand and ten, they took it away because of the financial crisis. We choose to guarantee everyone another pot. We are getting a little bit, that's why we have for the proposed operating budget for this year, we're getting a little bit more. It's not much. It's like three thousand dollars more. But they're looking, you can put the trust back into play so that the money does not be touched. Because that's what happened, they took, turned that away, the state did. And Pat out there spoke about that last night.
Well, that's exactly that.
So are you proposing no prices, or are you proposing two percent, one percent, three percent? What are we talking about?
I'm proposing I'm good with the salary that I'm receiving, and that's just for my own personal place. And if the board members wanna take that position, that's fine. And that's a salary that they can have, you know? I think that make your own proposal. Because as far as it is for me sitting here, I know exactly what I, I just said in the public. This ain't the first time I've done this, you know what I mean? I think the last time, it was a lot more for a lot of us.
I don't want Tim, I'd stay aware of that, but I see no problem with three percent raise. You got a lot more hassle than what Tim and I have put up with.
If you five hundred and eighty-five dollars for the first position, it'd be five hundred and ten dollars for the treasurer's position, and four hundred and twenty dollars for the supervisor's position. That would be...
At three percent?
At three percent.
Can I give a motion?
Thank you.
I don't know. We don't have nothing more to work with. I started out the gate with that point. We didn't receive nothing to work with if it was extra. So where's it coming from? What did the state give us that was more than we had? How did our operational budget increase? If it didn't increase, how can we do more with that? That's the point. You didn't get nothing more. Your salary didn't increase. Your operational budget didn't increase. You have to take it from somebody. It has to be taken out of the current budget that you run. And you have to take it from one of them line items and distribute it somewhere else, because you didn't get any more. Nothing increased for you. That was my original question. I'm not trying to shame you guys, trust me.
And I have an honest answer to it. When you do count more, operational budget increases just due to sound investments. So like, I'm reviewing all of our investments on a...
Just because of interest.
Yes, absolutely. But it's also, it's following the market, understanding where I should be working. So that is one thing I'm doing diligently to increase our revenue.
Yes.
But I'm just, that's just an honest answer. So that would be about twelve thousand dollars more than we previously had in the operating budget.
You know, and you make investments like that, deliver them to the town.
However you...
However we can. I don't know how we can... You know, I thought about, we had a discussion about what does the town need? Well, I know what the answer to that is now, money. You know, the town needs money. So how do you, how do you get the town more money? Well, turn that space into a revenue generating area. Let people park their boats in it during the winter. No, no, seriously. You have to do nothing to that area besides fix the ceiling, and you're making money. You fix the ceiling with the money you already have allocated to fix the ceiling, which I think is actually there, and let people park their boats in that spot and make whatever it is per square foot that you can get for boat rent. You have three overhead doors. You have to do nothing more than open them, bag the boat in it, and collect the loot.
Well, the third door is gonna be kind of sad, because that's gonna be your dinghy boat.
Hey, whoever puts it in there, use it. You know what I mean?
I agree with the logic. It's maximizing what we have to do.
Okay. You gonna go present?
Well, we have to do each resolution as we have time itself.
Okay.
That is how the resolutions work, they have to be voted on separate.
What do you think?
Resolutions for the trustees have to be separate?
Yes, each one deals, well, just one. One for the trustee's position. It's a resolution for each position.
Good.
So you guys, what are some of the paths to say, you know? It's like making a motion.
Yeah, I make a motion to keep the trustee paid exactly where it's set.
Four hundred plus forty-five in the meeting?
Yeah.
Fourth. Want paper?
Okay, well, we got a little trouble.
Oh. Lee?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Yes. Andy?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Okay, it's a yay, time zero. Treasurer's salary would go to what?
If you, one thousand, or sixteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. Is what they give us, that's for the three percent raise.
What was it before?
Sixteen five.
Sixteen five, dot four nine five. Do you agree with that? Anybody wanna make that motion or no?
My boy, resolution, three cents. And momentum.
And Brandon?
You have a second?
I'll second please.
Discussion? I'll make a say I. I got it. I'm old. Megan?
Hi.
Lee? Tim?
Speaking on the low side.
Andy?
Yes.
Resolution, I mean, clerk's salary? Goes to what?
Three percent raise would be exactly that, twenty thousand and fifty-five dollars.
Can you hear a resolution on that?
Come on.
Tim?
Yeah.
Megan?
Yes.
Andy? And the resolution is Steve buying loan, fourteen thousand. Resolution for that?
Brandon and I will support that.
Andy?
Yes.
Lee?
Yeah.
Tim?
Yes.
Okay, one more thing. Municipal building courts, for the water heater, we have those?
I mean, I had one, did you get another one?
I did. And he came in super good, he was a thousand fifty. Although, he decided not to take the job. If he was even a local person. I looked at the, I looked at the work with him, and the job is kind of shady up front. He's not insured.
Oh, okay.
So he's like, no, I don't, I don't want... You know, I said, man, if you give a price like that, I'd die a little bit. It's like, I never mind.
So which one are you gonna go with, you guys?
I think that, I think that my question is, are the other people insured? Because they should be, because that is a little wild over there.
Is it?
Coming out of the breaker box, you got a, I couldn't even tell you, a ten day wife going to like a bigger one. It still tails in.
It's completely rewired.
It has to be rewired, but it's just, there's so much there that I'm like going, oh, man, you know? You're not insured, this is a possible liability for you. So make sure your people are insured.
They are. I mean, because we have to consider W nine for them, and a happy of the life of their insurance, so... There's Crowman, and there's Bergman, HVAC. So, but he, Bergman did not do his is just for a six gang water heater. So it's not tankless. It was just a small... So, it's not a tankless, it was just a small, steep, pretty low standpipe.
So, a price on a tankless electric was really only about five hundred.
Okay.
Okay? Just so that you know, the numbers that you'd be on, the electrical panel, from the distance of that water heater location to the box is about ten feet. So you gotta run about ten feet of wire, you have to put in a brand-new breaker, it's gonna yank you about eighty bucks, a hundred bucks maybe, I mean, that's really the high side of things, in my opinion. And, uh, so you're six hundred, my guy was right in his stuff, but...
Yeah, it shouldn't be over twelve hundred bucks.
And then it was, uh, put together with CPDC, which you could run, um, what's that, uh, PEX? You could run PEX to that, which was his plan, and that wouldn't cost you an arm and a leg. I think that the total job should have ranged fifteen hundred and under, we allocated twenty to fifty. When I look at the job, I'm like, whoa, it's a nothing job, it's just shady as heck. What, what sets it there? And it was a ream, uh, tankless electric. So...
So we still don't have anything?
No, we, we don't have a very competitive vote, but we do have some courts. What was Bergman?
Nine fifty, that was for the six-gallon electric water heater, and it did not include electric at all. And that was no electric, so...
No electric, permanent, no electric.
Oh, okay.
And the separation.
So that was not including, that's why we said his didn't include electric, the other ones did. Well, yeah, so...
Who's the next best court?
For the forty-gallon, uh, this one is from Chrome, and this was twenty-one forty-six, and that was for the permit, the running copper connecting line, you know, looks like with the electric as well.
I make a motion, I, um, that support a gallon, these licenses insured.
Any more discussion? You have a second?
Yep.
I'm sorry.
Any discussion on this? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Most, Harry? I want to entertain the most for Trump.
Can I feel one more public comment? Because usually you have one in two. Andy and Megan, I don't envy you that job at all. And I realize that these raises and things like that are for positions, not persons. Unfort, for, I don't know which way to say it. Your names are connected with positions, so therefore you're automatically, Andy's getting a raise, Megan's getting a raise. It's not always thought of, and it's as a position that's getting a raise. Um, sometimes the way you guys talk, it sounds like it's more the person, the position that you're speaking about too. But I do want you to know, I do think you're doing a good job, I wouldn't want that voting, that's for all the T in China, but I think you're doing a good job getting it handled and straightened up. So, I just wanna put that out there, that I do think you're doing a good job, even though I was complaining about things earlier.
Hey, thank you. Now I am taking a motion for Trump. Remove.